I have one correction.
Yeah. Go ahead.
On unfinished business 6A, it was 190,000. It was two-thirds of the way down the page, not 90,000.
So they're possibly remaining work?
That's correct.
So my question is, it's possibly a matter of interpretation, but it said, misstuttered, "Question the present significant reserve fund balance" in the policy adopted at last year's town meeting. And the policy was 20% of the budget, which is correct. But then it says, "At present, the fund balance," which sounds like it's referring to the reserve fund, but that's not the reserve fund. That's, the fund balance is $550,000. So that's the surplus from last year. But it's not the reserve fund. We've put no money into that reserve fund yet.
Were you reading this? You on unfinished business?
I'm on unfinished business.
Okay. Again, 6A.
Yes. That's correct, yes? So when we're talking about the $550,000, that's the surplus from last year. The reserve fund is this policy that we approved for up to 20% of the budget, but we have put no money into that at this point. Is that what everybody understands?
Correct. I don't remember ever moving to actually move, to make a motion to be actually moving. But my memory could be bad too, so.
What do you mean moving?
That we actually talk, turn around and say we're going to move X amount of money into that.
We haven't. We have not.
That's what I said. I don't remember ever doing it.
Well, so I guess it's just a matter of interpret. So it's just when it said "the fund balance," it sounds like it refers to the reserve fund. In reality, it should be the surplus, the FY19 surplus is $550,000. Does that make sense?
Did we actually say that or our attempt was? I think our attempt was that, but did we actually say that?
When? At the last meeting?
Yeah, in these minutes. I'm only talking about the minutes.
Well, that's, I don't know. That's a question.
As far as the meeting goes, yes. The 550 on your financial statements is sitting in unreserved fund balance.
Right, a surplus. It's not the, the...
That is your interpretation of your fund balance policy. I don't agree with you, but yes, you're right in what you're saying that we discussed at the meeting.
Right, that there is a reserve fund in which there is no money at this point. Well, because according to the policy, we would have to vote to take the money out. So you can't have, I don't think you can have...
I think before town meeting, you should get a clarification from your attorney as to when you adopt a policy, when you have to start following that policy.
Well, what I, what I understand is the policy says we may have up to 20. It doesn't say we have to.
So then if you don't, you should give it all back to us then? Because if you're not going to reserve it... You're talking about the minutes right now.
Yes.
As far as the minutes go, the $550,000 that I referred to was what is sitting on your financial statements at June 30th as unreserved fund balance?
Yes.
Yes.
As far as the minutes, that's why I'm getting back to my point. The minutes are the minutes.
Right, that's, and I think what she's saying is that it could be interpreted that I was saying that the 550 at that point, at June 30th, was in the reserve.
And you were not.
I was talking about what is on your financial statements as unreserved fund balance, yes.
Right. So minutes are good.
Yeah, so if we approved the minutes here, what's going to show up is in the next meeting, this discussion will show up on the minutes of the next meeting saying we clarified what we were talking about.
Yes, it was the FY19 unreserved fund balance as per your financial statements.
Do you want...
There's no, you're not correct.
I don't think we have to change it because she agrees that that's the, what she means.
But do we want to put unreserved fund balance instead of reserve?
If we didn't say that, we didn't say that though.
But we didn't say it, so.
Right. So my feeling is, the minutes is, if that's what we said, these minutes next time should say, we had this discussion with Cynthia.
And it was clarified that it was the FY19.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, that one, do it.
Okay.
So moved and seconded with the change though of the 90,000 for the town hall renovations is, should be 190,000. So did that change? All in favor of seconding the minutes? Say aye. Aye, opposed? Minutes are the...
I'm going to have to ask who made the motion to second.
I did and he seconded.
Yep. Communications and public comments. Okay, yep, right. Moving on to unfinished business. Formal vote on the Brennan contract dated July 3rd, signed on December 5th, but we did not formally vote on this like we were supposed to, and so now we're doing that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we need a motion to approve this?
Don't we need, we need in the motion to put the dollar amount?
In the motion?
You can.
The contract, we're approving the contract which, yeah.
As presented, but yes.
The contract is for the sum of $235,625 and zero.
I'll second.
Second by Craig. Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Final budget discussion.
So let me just ask real quick about you. This contract was signed by him on 12/5, but we're going to sign today.
You may, yes?
Okay.
The contract was designed by me, and that's what it was submitted by, is me. Then you guys were going to sign it when, back in July 14th meeting, and then we didn't. So you may choose one of those and just, everybody sign them. Just at the bottom.
My only question, are we in trouble only because of the 235? Have you paid this person?
We have paid some off this, off this contract, yes.
Because I'm looking at the agreement that we pay invoices within 15 days, so you must have already paid.
Yes, we have paid as she's been applied for.
I just want to make sure it's in the minutes.
Right. I think that will be part of the budget discussion.
I was going to say, I know I'm going to beat a dead horse tonight, but...
No.
I hope there's more discussion about the fact that this was approved by the town manager with no select board approval or discussion of how it was going to be paid for, and you guys just did it again. There's, so I'm hoping that there's going to be discussion about how you think you're paying for that without voter approval. So we can move on to the other stuff, but we have a purchasing policy that says anything over $10,000 must be approved by the select board. And I'm, I'm not perfect. I make mistakes. That's a pretty big number.
Do we want to discuss this now?
I think we should.
Yep.
We're under that discussion. I mean, we're under...
So, I mean, I think, and I have not actually found the documentation for this, but presumably we were, the town, voters approved renovation of the town hall, is that what you're saying at some point? You said, but you said it was a verbal...
Yes, but we're talking Phase 3. I'm sure that's where she wants to go with this. So what happened was, we put it out to bid on May 8th. We did it through the shopper, Keen Sentinel, Greenfield, Recorder, and Valley News. We sent out 12 letters for bid requests from contractors. May 8th minutes to the select board said the bid is out. On June 1st, we had only had one person call about any of the questions that were out there. So I called the contractors, all 12 that had received the letter. On June 7th, the bids were due. We received one bid, Brennan. It came in at $304,825. Select board minutes on June 12th, it was too high. So they, you reduced the scope of work, revised the bid to $235,625 on June 25th. Select board minutes, new bid was received on June 26th, 2019. At that point, we were going to approve it, and it was tabled because of, it wasn't on the agenda as a line item. So at that point, the contract was revised with the scope of work on July 3rd, submitted by myself. Select board minutes, contract review on July 9th. Again, it was brought up to approve it. It got a verbal approval, did not go through the proper sequence of a formal approval. December 5th, the contract was signed by Brennan. Minutes on, from the select board, work was to commence on December 11th. Work did commence on January 6th. Select board minutes, IT room update, January 8th. Select board minutes, January 22nd, two closets completed. We had all assumed that the proper channels had been done. I did not sign this contract without your approval. You had multiple chances to do it formally, and we, we were supposed to do it on the last July meeting, and we passed up on this last July meeting, went to August, and it was dropped. I'll take responsibility for not carrying that over to the August 14th meeting.
But I think the issue that Cynthia's bringing up is, where is the money coming to fulfill the contract?
That's the second part of the conversation, but the first part was, I signed a contract that didn't have approval.
And we, we're doing the same thing. We can approve the contract, but in the minutes, it should be some motion where, where we're moving the money and where we're getting the money from. That's, which is our responsibility. So we just discussed, we're going to pay $235,000, but we need to discuss now and have it in the minutes, where we're getting the money. Whether, it could be that we need to go ask, we need to at least clarify, we need to come up with $235,000, where's it coming from? So we're at least on the same page of how we're paying that bill, okay? And too often, I think that's why we're so confused, we've been doing this and doing that, when we actually didn't actually take a vote to say that, which would be to say tonight, we're going to take $235,000, we're going to go to the voters and ask for it, or we're going to move it? Or where are we getting it from? And then we agree as a board that that's what we're going to do.
Right, go ahead.
We need to get the number, the 235, because we already have money.
We had $63,000.
So...
That's only Brennan's contract. We have an IT contract to upgrade our service with that.
But we're, right now, we're still talking Brennan's contract. We just passed, we just passed this contract. Now we need to make, clarify where we're coming up with the money to pay for. If we already got $60,000, and we should point that out, that we have $60,000 that's going to be moved from here to there to pay for it, where are we coming?
That was already in the capital improvement fund.
It was already in there. So we're going to take the 60 out of the capital fund to pay for it.
Are you saying 60 or 63?
63.
That doesn't cover 190,000 that's left.
No, no, that's, no, I, we're still in that discussion. At least, I'm thinking we are.
I would like to go back to your original. You said, when this discussion first started a few minutes ago, I think you were going in the direction where somebody, I was told at the last meeting, that it was voted on at last year's town meeting.
I don't think last year's.
We didn't vote on it. We, we discussed it.
That is what was said at this board meeting, last meeting, and Katie and I looked for it in the minutes, and Russ said it is not in the minutes. He couldn't, it was not in the minutes.
It's not the minutes.
I think if we went back, we never voted for it, but the question is, did we discuss any thought?
I just want to clarify.
No, you're right.
Because things that are being said here are being said multiple other places outside of this setting, that it was voted on at last year's town meeting, and I sent you guys a link of the video.
You did.
And it was not voted on.
I don't think I disagree with you on that.
Huh?
I don't think I disagree with you on that.
So I just want to clarify that in order for us to make really sound decisions as taxpayers, the only thing we have is a vote. That's the only thing that we have in order to try to keep some semblance of, I don't know, something around here.
The minutes state what I did say, and it says that Mr. Hodgkins added his interpretation of the select board, asked the town, asked the town, at town meeting, to spend and carry over the surplus to continue town hall renovations. This was approved by, from the floor by the voters, but was not included in the minutes. It wasn't a floor vote.
Does approved from the floor, so we don't mince words, to you mean it was voted on?
Well, it wasn't.
That's not my question.
No.
My question is, when somebody says to me, "It was approved from the floor," that is interpreted by me that it was voted on? I want to know if you feel the same way. If not, tell me. I don't feel that way.
No, I agree. I know why it says approved from the floor.
Because that's what was said at the last select board meeting.
I'm not making excuses, but when we come to you with the exact dollar amount, we actually asked you for the exact dollar amount. I think, you know, I'm saying, is it, was it because we didn't have the exact, I don't remember all that.
No, I'll tell you.
Go ahead.
I mean, I, we can be, and I was, like I said, we're beating a dead horse a little bit tonight, but I think some of this I'm going to say on Saturday, so we might as well just talk about it now, and if we can sort some of it out, fine. But I watched that meeting. John Ewald asked about the Phase 3 town hall and when they would come to voters for that. Susan said about, there was about 200,000 left, and we have a surplus, and you were discussing whether you wanted to use it for town hall renovation. John asked again, "When will you go to the town for the money?" Craig said, "They're having conversations about that now. They're not there yet." That was what was said at town meeting. Now, if that is interpreted as a vote from the floor, then someone needs to start going to class about what a vote is. So that, if that was what, what was in the back of everybody's mind as approval, John Ewald asked twice, "When are you going to come back for this Phase 3 funding to the town?" All, I read all of the minutes from 2019. I watched the videos that were out there. There was a ton of conversation from this board about spending the surplus on the town hall renovation. So there should be no question as to where you guys thought that money was coming from. You just never asked permission.
Yeah.
Just say it. That's the bottom line. You didn't ask permission to spend it.
I don't think I disagreed with you at all.
So somehow, we need to rectify that. We need to stop dancing around what we think was said, what was, we need an actual vote on spending this money. That's the bottom line. I sat and watched a video from the meeting, January of 2019. There was a girl there from Greater Falls Connection that was asking to be put on the ballot for $2,500. There was discussion, and she was grilled about what they do with money if it's left over at the end of the year. And I thought, that's a good question. Why are we not holding our same, ourselves the same accountability? We're a nonprofit. We're not a for-profit business. But we're grilling our social service agencies on what they're doing.
You know, Cynthia, I, you know that I'm supporting your knowledge and appreciating it. And I think, you know, this has been a thing that, you know, admittedly, it, we were amiss in not, you know, saying, okay, this is what we're going to spend this year, and this is what we need, and we put on this. But, you know, this process on doing the town hall has been going on for so many years, and along the way, it was, there was a time when, you know, we said we're having this, you know, that the, we had people come to decide how to do this, and what we should be doing, and so on and so forth. And at that point, you know, it was clear that this was going to be happening, that we are going to do the town hall, and, you know, maybe it would be, I agree with you that it should have been more specifically stated as each process went on. I agree with you, and it wasn't. But we were assuming that everybody was in agreement because the town hall was, it was going on.
Well, I guess we learned that assuming is not a good strategy.
No, I know. I agree with you, you know, it's, and I'm glad we'll, we'll get to doing it the right way. But the fact is that we are now in the middle of doing something that should be finished.
Well, you know what? I said that the last time I was here, but there's a part of me that thinks you should stop it until you figure this out.
I'm with her.
It wa, yes, it's torn apart, and I don't want, I don't want any of these guys having to work in shambles. It's uncomfortable. It makes for a horrible work environment, but that's something that you guys created. We didn't do it as taxpayers. We didn't create this problem. You, you put out information on other projects. We saved money for bridges. I am 100% sure, we never put a bridge project on the docket without knowing how much it's going to cost and if we have money set aside for it. Why are we treating this any different? Why did this go so awry? And, and I understand what you're saying. You guys have been in this a long time, and you have a lot of background. You've been here since, I don't know when, and you've been talking about this for years and years and years, but John Ewald stood up at town meeting last year and asked, "When are we going to vote on this?" That was within the timeframe that you were actually doing the project.
We should have done that.
So that should have been a great reminder that, oh, you know what? We really need to have a special town meeting for it. I don't care if you want to keep on the same timeline.
Well, we've been having, you know, one of the, I think, one of the things that led us into this is that we have been having surpluses, and not because, you know, we've had rants, we've had, you know, money that has come in that was unexpected, and so the, knowing that this project was in place, you know, we thought, okay, we've got some money to use for this.
I have no problem with that, Toby. None whatsoever. I get it.
Yeah. I, you know, I'm willing to say that, you know, it needs to be, you know, corrected.
I'm not sure I agree with Cynthia about shutting it down right now, but I'm not sure that's the why I was thinking. You may want to do that, but it just seems like stocking a project in the middle and starting again is not an easy thing to do. Seems to me that it's within your grasp to rectify it. You have actually some time.
Right.
I mean, you haven't, have you approved a budget yet?
We have, but the town has not.
But we can, we can also change it at town meeting. Is that true? I'm sure we can, we have the ability to...
Depends on the magnitude of the change.
Right, right. Do you know how much we've spent so far, Russ, on, to Brennan?
Out of the...
We have the 63,000.
Right.
And we expended all that?
Yes. We're into the, into that now, approximately in this last billing, probably 20, 23, 24,000.
I have a question. You said that you paid a down, you paid the down payment to the Brennans. Where did that money come from, and how much was it?
A down payment?
Well, you made a payment to them.
We made a payment, the first payment. Actually, two payments came out of the capital improvement fund.
And that money that was set aside for the town hall.
That was the 63,000.
Well, that money is...
Well, it's, I still haven't had that question answered. The 100,000 that we voted down two years ago to put in that fund, I could not find where it was ever put back, and nobody has answered that question. So when you say that the 63,000 is, that's all free and clear, and that's good, that's voted on money, that's money we put in there, well, there was 100,000 of that money that was in there that I'm not really sure was supposed to be. We voted no at town meeting to move that money there.
Extra money?
Yeah, there was a surplus that was moved in '16.
Right, we were going to put another 100,000, right. But you did, it was not approved. So money was never put in?
It was put in there in '16. They asked for approval in '17, and we voted no, and it was never moved back. That's what I saw, and I have not been shown anything different to tell me that it was moved back. It was a question I asked last time, and I have not gotten an answer to that.
It's probably a question for an auditor, I would guess, though.
I can give you what I recall, which is, we did this 100,000 way prior to, you brought it to our attention, we brought it to legal counsel, they told us to ask for forgiveness at town meeting. We went to town meeting and said, "We have another 100,000 that we'd like to add to that 100,000, to make it 200,000 in the capital reserve, making it just about whole." That would be all of the money we needed at that time. At that point, it was voted no, not to add the second 100,000 into that fund. So it was never added in, never taken out.
Well, I can show you in your financial statements where they are.
That first 100,000, only the first 100,000. The second 100,000 was never put in and never taken out.
Who approved the first 100,000?
We didn't. We, we were asking for forgiveness at town meeting. And then Robert Whitberg, we all remember this, stood up and said, "If you're not going to use it, give it back to us." We ended up giving another 100,000 to the taxpayers to make it 200,000 off of our taxes. That's, was the complete 300,000 that we got back from the bridge.
So I, so I guess the question is, you said, how to rectify it? The amount we need to finish the project minus the 63,000, or, is that what we have left, or 7,000, whatever's in the capital improvement fund?
There is nothing left in the capital reserve now.
No, because there was 60-something and 50-something's already been spent, so there's 12 left right now. Last time I looked.
And we've, we've had bills since then.
Yeah.
So we are at zero, and I think we're at about 20,000, 23,000 overspent.
So to finish the project, we need X amount of money, 200,000, whatever. And how do we now ask permission? Do we put it on, can we bring it up at town meeting?
That would be my suggestion. I mean, if you have...
Or have a special town meeting.
Can you deviate that much from the original article?
You're making your moderator nervous.
Really?
I think, it's pretty close, I mean, the rule of thumb that the League of Cities and Towns recommends is 10%. We're pretty close to that on this budget. We've got about a $2 million budget.
Wait, 10% of the budget that you can deviate from?
To do by amendment within it, but I'm a little more, I'm trying to think of your, I don't know your whole budget that well, but what line item are you adding it to? If you're creating a new line item, that's going to be more problematic. It's one thing to increase the, the whole bottom line, and you've already got a placeholder in there, but you're throwing, if you're throwing in a $200,000 new line, that's getting...
You wouldn't add a new line. You'd put in the capital improvement fund.
Right, but we don't want that to come from the tax, from the tax rate, because we have a large surplus that we, and ideally, the money would come from the surplus, which is sitting there doing nothing.
That's right.
Did you guys budget for the surplus? What's the plan for the 550,000?
Good question. We've been sitting on here going, yeah, yeah. I mean, I think...
Traditionally, back in the day, we would give a percentage back to the taxpayers, and then we allocated that money somewhere. We either kept it, kept it as reserve, we just call it a float of, you know, 5% for fluctuation, and then the rest of it, we said, we'd give it back, and we designated...
Well, we seem to keep going through the year going, well, let's wait and see, let's wait and see, let's wait and see, but I think at some point, we need to have a schedule that says, this day we know our surplus, this day the auditor approves or, you know, says this is the surplus. Town meeting or January 1st?
I think at the town meeting, we should be telling the people where that surplus is.
Or at some point, we decide, this is what we're going to do with the surplus.
It's typically done during your budget season, because you know what your surplus is by then.
That's exactly right. That's not, and we just have put it off saying, well, we don't know, blah, blah, blah.
No, because you'd haven't known, because you know you're going to spend it. That, I've listened to the conversations.
I totally agree with you.
The conversations have been, there was no discussion about that surplus because you had no idea how much you were going to spend on this project, and you needed to wait to see that that was done. There have been multiple conversations about that.
Yeah, we've talked about the surplus, for sure.
So that's the reason it wasn't talked about.
Sorry. Yeah. Go ahead, sorry.
I have some concerns as to, now we're signing into a contract with somebody... I have some concerns as to, now we're signing into a contract with somebody that should have been signed in July or August, yet they've been working here around the clock all summer and into now. And we still don't know where we're going to come up with over $200,000 to pay this guy when he's done. That's unacceptable.
Okay.
That's unacceptable for the board, not to be able to answer that question. It's unacceptable for the person pushing this and bringing this contract up now. If this project was that important, this contract should have been looked at and dealt with in August or September. And then it should have been brought up to, hey, we don't have the money for it, or we need to go ask them for the money for it. You can't just sign into contracts and keep guys working and expect us to foot the bill. I mean, that's crazy. Who does that? That's, that is unacceptable. Unacceptable.
Agreed. But we do have money boards, just has not been.
But you don't have money because you don't have permission. So it's just sitting there waiting.
Said it that way, yeah.
Right? Am I right?
You're right.
If you can't spend it, you don't have it until you get permission to spend it. Then you have it. When it's committed to that project, then you have it.
Everything you're saying is common sense. You did it, but, I mean, I was.
Right, Craig. I mean, I'm no genius, okay?
No, but we didn't go into a, somewhere along the line, at that town meeting, I thought we were coming back for a vote. And somewhere along the line, I guess I was persuaded that, oh, we have permission to do it. I don't know where we got there. I'll take it right out of the blame too, because I just thought, well, I just thought we were, but I guess we're not, you know? But we had the money and it gets back to the point of, yeah, we, we look pretty stupid right about now, I'll tell you that, because we realize that we can't prove that we asked for it or a vote. But at the time, the big argument, I remember Russ having a discussion about it, we hadn't put the contract out yet to know. And it wasn't fair to the contractor to come to the voters and say, we need 235 because...
He just said that the contract was ready for you guys to sign in July or August. Okay? The contractor just signed it in December.
But this is last March. I'm talking about why we didn't vote for it. That's why I said, I thought we were coming back to vote for it, because I thought we didn't want it to lay our cards out to say, this is how much it is.
So you guys do know that at any point during a calendar, financial year, if something comes up, you can hold a special town meeting, right?
And we should have. We should.
I mean, we don't have to wait until March to talk about these things.
I mean, think about it, it's a win-win. You hold it, you get the same number of people that show up.
Or less.
And it gets voted in. I mean, it's a no-brainer.
It's a no-brainer now, yeah. There's no, there's no question.
Why try to sit here and shuffle shit around? And all it does is it makes it, it makes it look bad on, on you guys, Ollie. Makes it look real bad on the guy holding the contract and why it's brought up now after all this work is being done.
Unfortunately, I can't argue with you.
So it seems like these are the options. Well, there aren't too many. Fletcher says, no, we can't do it at town meeting.
Well, it's, I'm looking at your budget and the other line item.
That's what I'm trying to find too.
For that capital reserve fund. You haven't funded it this year. And even if you did, I mean, if you look at your articles that you've already approved, you always put a special article in when you move money into a special fund. Look at Article 8, to see if the voters will raise and appropriate the sum of 130,000 for the town highway equipment reserve fund. You always put a special article in for that kind of movement.
And that's what I, when you brought it up, I've been sitting here, I can't find, I can't find that line item and where it would be.
It's not, well, it'd be at the end of your budget, but it isn't in this year's budget. You weren't proposing to fund anything.
Right.
And one of the problems you've got with how you've written your articles is you used the wrong number in the main article. You should have been using the 2,46,000 and you used the 2,191 because you shouldn't have put those.
2,87,000.
Yeah, you just read the wrong column.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong column. But you should have, you should have had, those, these are things after that bottom line are special articles anyway. You always put the reserve funds into special articles. So I think you're sort of painted into a corner right now.
Here's my question too, and I guess it doesn't really matter at this point, but things like the equipment reserve fund and the bridge, when we have a special article to move money into there, that money is raised through taxes in the current year.
It all, it gets added on to you, you know, if you take your 2,87, then you're, this year, going to add 145, although it's already in the number, but I'm going to ask that that be amended down so we can do it in an orderly fashion. But yeah, it all comes out of the same mechanism for raising votes.
But I know what your question is. If you want to use surplus, how do you put it in your budget?
Right. It would have to be a different question altogether.
No. You would, you would put it as a separate article.
Right.
Because like Fletcher said, that's how we typically vote our, and you would say, and to be funded by our surplus.
Yes, thank you.
So would it pose a question? Raise by taxation. Cynthia, would we actually have to have the voters approve that we're taking it? So.
You have it on.
The other sheet has your income, so we would actually have to say, here's the income. The income's coming from this to go over to here. So in the vote, you would actually say, to be raised by, not taxes.
No, it would, it should be funded by your surplus. I mean, we, we, you had the article two years ago that said, can we move $100,000 to the capital fund or whatever it's called and use, from the surplus? You've, you've written the article before, so it's not a, and that's the one we voted no on. So it's been done in the past and it just never continued, maybe because we voted no once.
And we've moved away from designating a specific funding mechanism. We're just saying, raise and appropriate, because it becomes problematic if you say by taxation and Russ rustles up a grant, then, you know, theoretically, you're not doing it. But so we just use the general raise and appropriate. If you're sitting on surplus funds and that can be a source, sure, appropriate it out of those surplus funds. But right now, your problem is you don't have an article to do it.
Right.
I mean, you could do it and it could be, it could be, Cynthia's right, it could be a pretty simple article. You already got the template, but.
But we can't.
You can't get it onto the agenda now.
So the two option, well, not to do the work or to have a special meeting, those seem to be the...
Or just, or vote as a select board to take it out of what we planned to do to begin with.
Out of the surplus?
Out of the surplus and take the heat for it.
Or have, you know, if you want to be out on that limb, do that and have a special town meeting to ratify what you did. That, that's the way you cover your butt on that.
What if we say no?
If you say no, then these guys are up a creek.
Well, then.
Are they really? Because the money has been spent by them.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I called, I called the Secretary of State and asked him. I'm like, what, what recourse do we have as voters?
No.
And the, the two things that I was told was you can take it into court and let the court decide. And in my mind, all that does is cost me more money because I got to pay your legal fees. So that didn't make sense to me. And the other thing is exercise your right to vote. And we could go to town meeting Saturday and vote the entire budget down and you guys have to start from scratch.
Good.
Go ahead, get you your special meeting.
Sounds good. We have a special meeting.
And then you have time to amend it, right? To put in the budget.
Yep.
I mean, I, you know, do you think that, I understand that it's very, it's very frustrating to have to deal with this kind of a problem because of the mismanagement that we did with this business. But nevertheless, we're in this position right now and we have to find a solution for it, including, you know, the fact, I, you know, it would be horrible, I think, if the town, in a way of, you know, punishing the select board, decides to stop the whole project.
Well, you know, Toby.
So if I stop paying my taxes, you're just going to let me go for a year because I shouldn't be punished and, you know, because I made a mistake? I mean, come on.
Well, you know what? I agree every, you guys are a volunteer board. Everybody makes mistakes. This has been three or four years of the same discussion.
Yeah.
So in my mind, how do you ever learn from that mistake if you're not forced to figure it out?
You're right.
So, um, the minutes from the first meeting prior to town meeting last year, there was a quote in there that said, talking about this, this funding for this town hall. And it said, you got advice from town council that you must ask for approval. At the next meeting, it was stated by Russ that we may bring it up under other business. How did it go from you must do it to you may do it? That was before your warning went out, before you even had your articles ready and approved for town meeting last year. So you're right, we are in the middle of it. We do need to have a solution. We have a building that's torn apart that we can't leave the way it is. But if we just keep saying, okay, it's okay to make the mistakes, ask for forgiveness, and you never have to figure out how to have this not happen again, we're just going to be back here next year.
Cynthia, I think that the point has really, really been made.
Okay, well.
I really do think so. I don't think you're going to find that this is going to happen again. Seriously. And we appreciate the fact that you brought it in the way you have.
Do we have, we have, right, to ask the voters?
What is that?
Siri, watched by Siri, confused. And if Siri's confused, about the rest of us.
We're all in this together.
Yeah.
Everybody in the town is together. We all wanted to work.
Yeah.
And I think that's something to think about is that we all want things to work out in the end for everybody, but it is up to you guys to figure out how we're going to get out of it, I think.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, like I said, what, what are the options that are left?
I, I think you should, I think you should go back and talk to Larry. I'm surprised you haven't done it in the two-week timeframe that, that we have discussed. I'm surprised you haven't contacted your auditor. It, it shocks me a little bit to think that we had this discussion and these are the things that were before you at the last meeting, and I sent you supplemental emails with questions that I had, and there's been, I'm surprised Larry's not here. Like, I would be asking my legal counsel, what can we do? Maybe he'd sit here and say, Cynthia, you're all wet. You don't, they don't need to worry about it. And Sheldon's right, they can vote on using that surplus and take the heat for it.
My feeling is he agrees with you.
Well.
But we are, we're, we're here. I was like, okay, where do we go from here?
I know, but we're at town meeting Saturday. What do we do?
That's, that's a very good question, other than to say, hey, do, does it make sense for us to head in the direction we hold another town meeting to vote for this?
You might have to, because sometimes.
And if the voters come back and say, no, we want nothing, then I think we got to really regroup. If they say yes, I think we feel comfortable enough that we're going to have to regroup as fast as we can and figure out how to come back with a vote, but I, I.
The tendency with the numbers, looking at it, you might be getting under the two. I mean, if we have 63 and 235 is the contract, theoretically, you're at 170. I mean, you're somewhere in that range.
But then we have our IT.
We got to find it.
Yeah.
Is that, is that part of a two?
Yes, it is.
Do you know what that number is?
About 30. So you're, you're right at 190 or 200.
But we can finish the project that we're on that they've got torn apart and not finish the town clerk's portion of it. And we will not be anywhere near the 235,000.
Okay, so this is going to be a point where we can, we have to, you know? I mean, that's ultimately.
We, we will be, we will be breaching our contract, but no more than Brennan has breached his contract already in previous. I think for us to keep going, it's almost slamming the voters in the face without a way of where we're going and how we're going to do it. It's just, it's almost, for us, the select board, we all made a mistake, but we're going to keep doing it. It seems arrogant, to be honest with you.
I agree.
You know? I just think that, laying the cards out how we are, and the voters, like you said, are simply, we're all in it together. Let's see, where, where can we go to get out of it?
Yeah, and I said that last time. I told you guys that I'm not, I just, it doesn't bring me a lot of pleasure to have to come here and do this stuff.
No, I appreciate your help because it's more embarrassing to be doing right in front of town meeting.
I'm a little disappointed, more legwork hasn't been done before tonight, to be honest. But that's, it is what it is. And with the information that I have tonight, I just have to decide how I'm going to vote on Saturday. That's it. There's nothing, I, like I said, I'm a little concerned that nobody seems to be really bothered about that $100,000 that was moved, but I don't quite understand what Russ was saying and I don't, did not follow that in the minutes anywhere, so I'd have to dig a little bit more on that. But I just feel like we're voting at town meeting on things and I'm feeling like that vote's not being taken seriously sometimes. I would also like clarification on that fund balance policy. I do not think that the voters interpreted it, that we are going to vote on it and you guys are not going to implement it until you spend all the fund balance down. I don't think that that was the intention of the fund balance policy.
To, I guess I don't understand that.
If you use the re, if you use the fund balance, Susan?
The fund balance, meaning?
The unreserved, the 550.
Yes, 550,000.
If you use some of that.
Right.
Or a big portion of it, because 100,000 can stay in unreserved.
Right.
And you use 200,000 of it for the town hall.
Right.
You're going to be left with 200,000.
Right.
I don't think the voters understood that when you had an unreserved surplus, I wouldn't have understood this, an unreserved surplus sitting there, that you had discretion to spend and all, all of what you wanted to of that surplus and then set the money aside for emergencies. It seems like it was supposed to be set aside for emergencies and then if you wanted to use it for something other than an emergency, you had to ask for permission.
I thought we had that discussion, that's why it was defeated, because the voters didn't want to earmark it for emergency.
No, what do you mean, it wasn't, it wasn't defeated? You, you have a fund balance policy.
No, but it was emergency one we discussed. And when emergency was locking us in, we could only use it for emergency. And that's why I thought we changed.
We voted for it.
For emergency.
And you cannot, you cannot spend that.
For reserve fund balance.
Right, right, right.
Emergency was not part of the wording of it.
Yeah, okay.
And my understanding is.
Okay. Reserve fund balance. The emergency, I thought we got rid of because it would handicap us that we could only use it for emergency. We couldn't figure out what emergency was.
You can keep fifteen percent emergency capital will be for non-recurring, unanticipated emergencies as defined by the select board. Any expenditure of the emergency capital by the select board for such purposes shall require approval of the majority of the members. Expenditure of either the working capital or emergency of the, or emergency capital of the contingency reserve for any other purpose shall require authorization of a majority of the voters present at a town meeting.
And that's the one we passed, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought, I thought we took the word emergency out.
No, well, that's changed from-
I don't have any, I'll shut up. I'm not, I know I'm gonna vote on Saturday.
But it's something that has to be voted on.
Yeah.
But we, so presumably at some point, which we haven't gotten to yet, I don't know why, the five hundred and fifty thousand, of that, we would take some and put it into the emergency fund. Once it goes in there, it's there, and it has, we have to vote, put it in, and vote to take it.
Where does it say on here at what point you, like, when are you gonna decide to implement this policy?
How bad's it?
No, no, it was signed in August. And we voted on it at town meeting in March. So to me, it's at least town, it's at least August, because that's when it was signed. But it was passed at town meeting. So to me, that's when it's implemented. If you wanna say until August, fine, that's when it was signed by the board. But that's still August, you knew what your surplus was then. And as a voter, I, I, I had no problem with this fund balance policy because it gave you clear direction what you could do with a fund balance at June thirty. It wasn't, we'll wait until we spend it on the town hall, then we'll move the money into the emergency.
But see, I don't think that that says that we have to put aside twenty percent of our budget into that fund. I would never approve that.
That's your cap. But you have more than twenty percent right now. You have twenty-six percent in unreserved.
Right, not in there, but in unreserved.
So when does it get moved in here, Susan?
That's a very good question.
That's what the answer I get for everything I know is.
The select board could decide to give a portion of it back to the taxpayers.
Right, exactly.
They probably should do.
Right, I agree.
Give a portion back, keep some for the, the hundred and fifteen, you know, five percent as a flow.
Right, definitely the five percent.
And then, and ideally, you would've set aside some for the town hall, and then we would've had, oh, we got a hundred thousand, split the same in the reserve.
Yes.
That's what-
I agree with that, but of course, we can't do that for the town hall now. And so, back to the question, which is, how are we gonna get the money for the town hall?
I guess Fletcher, when he said you can't even ask for it, you can't ask for it. So maybe we have, you can't shoot-
Sheldon, right, Sheldon-
We gotta have another meeting.
Right, right, we do. Sheldon's suggestion was that we just ask for the money for the Brennan contract, which would be below the ten percent.
But you don't have a place to put it. There's no line item in your current, in the budget that you've put, that you've warned the voters.
So you're saying, even if it were below ten percent, you can't put it in there?
I'm ninety percent certain I ruled you out of order as not germane.
Okay.
Is there a building, a building repair fund in our, in their building?
Well, there has in the past in a capital fund, but there's no money for it in this budget, so it doesn't exist in this budget.
But you could change a line item, make a look in the budget, and it was, you know, building repair. We have a maintenance budget, right? We just stretch it.
I'm gonna rule you out of order.
I'm just throwing it out there as a possibility.
Yeah, and I'm gonna-
Okay, fine.
Give you a possible response.
Thanks for doing it now.
Well, it is maintenance.
I'm just trying to figure it out.
The town meeting can overrule me. Even if they wanna do something that is blatantly not right, they can say, no, we wanna let these guys off the hook. You make the motion, I rule you out of order. They can overrule me.
I don't know. I think, I think voters actually are pretty forgiving, but I think that, I think that-
So you're trying to say that twenty thousand, we do have twenty thousand for all building maintenance. That's what Paul's saying. You know, you, yeah. But we normally in the past don't earmark a line item anyways. We don't need just raise the, we don't need just change the bottom line.
This is conversation that's not going anywhere.
I agree.
Let's move along. Let's move along to a better solution.
No, but, well, I think the possibility is that we can have a plan. I mean, that we can acknowledge the fact that this has been, you know, there's been problems. And that we are having a plan. And the plan will include having another meeting, because that would be necessary. And that, you know, if we can lay out a plan that people can look at and say, this is what we have to do, and this is what we will do.
You'd have to definitely support the budget being defeated.
Pardon me?
I think one of you'd have to definitely support the budget being defeated.
I don't think you need to go that far. You know, because either way, you're gonna have a special meeting. If you have no budget. The problem is, everything else in this budget relates to a fiscal year that starts on July one.
Right.
So you've got maneuvering room.
Right.
You're in the middle of a project with bills coming in that, that's, that aren't gonna wait till July one. That's your problem on this one item.
Yeah, is that right?
And we have a surplus from last year that we can use.
Well, you can, you can, you can try to, just on pure, have you got dollars in your checkbook? You can float it that way. But having been confronted by the fact that you're now expending money without the authorization of the town meeting, yeah, you may have the money in your pocket. You may also be exposing yourself to a misappropriation of funds charge.
All right, let's, let's, let's try and just set up, get a plan together and stop arguing about it and move it along.
So would the-
Not arguing either.
No, you're not arguing.
I think we all agree that we're in a position we shouldn't be in, but we're in there, and we're just gonna have to figure out how to get out of it, that's for sure. But like I said, I'd tell you one thing, you'll never get to be a select board, as a board, to pass that we're gonna do it. We need the voters, there's no question about it.
So how much warning would we need to give for a special town meeting?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Thirty days. So-
But you're right, this whole discussion we're having is about next year's fiscal year. We would actually be holding a meeting to discuss this year's fiscal year. There would be a quick article that in this year, we need to spend this much money, and we need your approval. That's it. Because at the town meeting, we could still pass this budget, you know, so that the next year is done. We just need to say, hey, listen, we're gonna come back to you because we got money over here, and we need your permission, and we're gonna come back to you with a vote for the town meeting, right? And so the voters could get up and say, okay, for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, we approve it.
Could you have a special town meeting and approve something to be spent in this fiscal year?
I think if you're sitting on the money and you need to move it, yeah, you just need the explicit permission.
Pass this for next budget year.
Pass this budget.
Have your special meeting just to do that one little thing and get it done here.
Yeah, thirty days.
If you want the money in this two years.
You wanna do two things. You wanna ratify whatever has happened already.
Right.
And you want authority to finish out the contract.
And as long as we do it way before June, we do it, let's say, this is March, if we do it by-
Soon as possible.
By May, by May first, we're still comfortably within that year. And then we still would look at, man's gonna wanna get some money.
Within thirty days, yeah.
And that may need some money to pay us hell.
Yeah, hold on.
What I was saying is, if we have a reserve, and the taxpayers can authorize that to be spent, and you just postpone the work and stuff for thirty days until they can hold a special meeting and vote on it, nobody in town wants to see it unfinished. Though, I don't wanna see it. The people who work here deserve a good spot, I agree. But it's when we get blindsided with stuff that people get nervous. You know, when money's just getting moved and used, or not, it gets a little nerve-wracking.
Yeah.
That makes you wonder what else is going on. What's the next problem that we're gonna run into where the taxpayers aren't, don't have a say in it? Oh, well, we took care of that last time, and, you know, we got away with it, so let's just, we can just do that again. So I think that right there would be the best course of action that I've heard. My question, Fletcher, would be, do you bring this up before we go and vote the budget in the articles to actually under, I guess normally, other businesses normally at the end, so that you're not blindsiding people that you went to the whole meeting, and at the end, oh, by the way, we need to have you do this permission to do this? Are we better off to somehow have that discussion?
Early.
Early.
I would, my preference would be to put it up front when you know you've got your maximum audience. I mean, the point is, you want people in town to know what you're up to. So, yeah, even though it's not gonna change this budget, sure. I mean, you, you got the perfect starting point, you got Article eight. You can say, look, we have a special article right here, this is what we need to do. We just missed the boat on this one.
Actually, I feel more comfortable, yeah.
I think we should have a date for a special meeting in mind, too.
Yeah, if you can figure out the timeline, we could announce at a town meeting.
That would even be even better. You're right, that would be even better, that we were actually saying, you know.
Not like sometime in the future, right?
Or like I said, we would get back to you for a vote, and we never do.
Right.
Yeah.
We haven't got there yet, unless you heard exact words.
I thought we were gonna have a vote, yeah, I was with you, but whatever.
So, okay. What do you think, Kevin?
Um-
Put your two cents in?
This can't be done without the voters' approval, period. And I've remained silent for, I brought something up, I think, at the last meeting, Toby, you weren't here regarding books and records when this was first brought to my attention. I was kinda fobbed off a little bit in the last one. Because, correct me on the timeline, I don't wanna, I know exactly where we are. The timeline for doing renovation of this building started when? Not two thousand and sixteen, but even farther, farther than that, right?
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Nineteen ninety-eight was when they established the fund.
Right. So, as a two cents that I simply had, there's nothing I can do as a member of this board. And I'm certainly, I'm with the board, these people have always treated me with respect, and we're together. So I am appalled and embarrassed about how this went. That's all I can say for my, my two cents. And it needs to be fixed, and it needs to be fixed with the approval of the voters who have a clear, concise, and coherent understanding of what went wrong, why it went wrong. And I agree with Cindy, and again, if I'm saying this wrong, I couldn't get out the last meeting. The way to kind of forestall this in the future is to go back with what Sue, Sue Sennings had said. I'd spoke to her, VCLT, about making sure that when you're bridging, you're bridging different people who are, who are on this board and then are not on this board, because we have turnover, into this, to make sure that we're in the lane with much stronger and much more accountable prior records of what actually was said, and making sure that those records are clear and apparent even at the bi-week, the bi-monthly meetings. So that way, there is not a pigeonhole where we get caught, and then we end up in this position. You know, for me to sit here and say, I'm the second year on the board, and go back and say where I was as far as a taxpayer I'm doing, and some people know that here in this, and I wasn't for any renovations on this as a taxpayer. I didn't wanna renovate the town hall at all, I wanted to give it to the historic society. But the errors that are made, we made them, and they need to be fixed the right way. That's what I was trying to say the last time. And the only way to do that, and I totally agree again with Cindy, that you have to, you know, we have good lawyers, and make sure that our books and records are not just meeting the minimum standard, but also coming up to a standard to where we can go in front of the taxpayer and say, this is exactly what was said, so it's not a mistake that we're allowed to make again. That's the point I was trying to get at the last time. Like, that's a little bit more than two cents, I apologize. But to ask me, it's usually a quarter or fifty cents. So I'm, 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 all I can say is I'm sorry. And, you know, there's no excuse for not following procedure properly. I don't know.
And do you agree that a special meeting to-
Absolutely.
-put the money would-
Absolutely.
...read on that so much? I don't know if that requires any action by the board this time. I don't have a clue, but probably not.
No, because I think we're not, I think we deftly-
Pick a day, right?
Pick a-
All right. Let's pick a date then.
Only three days, right?
All right.
Don't you wanna have a plan Saturday?
Yeah, no.
I would engage your legal counsel tomorrow.
I think that's important.
We could have it-
Definitely for writing the warning for that meeting as well. Larry needs to be involved.
Right.
And I think we need to talk with him about, you know, how to rectify-
It's thirty days from when the warrant is put out, which means that if we're meeting on Saturday, it has to be at least thirty days from Monday. Is that correct?
That's why I would engage him.
He stated forty-five days was the minimum that you would be able to-
Who stated that?
Larry.
Okay.
Can you get Larry to pick a date that would be the earliest, and then we would actually-
So forty-five days would-
It's forty-five days, Chris.
Would be April fifteenth.
If we do this tomorrow, or Friday, forty-five days from there would put it in the middle of April. So you've got thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-fourth, the sixteenth. Thursday, the sixteenth.
As a tentative, but I think the idea was-
I'm a little confused.
So we would, we would talk to Larry first, and if he says the sixteenth is the, right?
You wouldn't warn it from Friday, you wouldn't warn it on Monday.
About a special meeting? Talk to him about a special meeting? Okay.
Get a hold of Larry, but I, I don't wanna warn it from Friday because we haven't had the town meeting yet. I wouldn't wanna order it Monday after having the town meeting that we're gonna go and warn it. If we warn it on Friday-
We may change the whole thing that we have-
That's what I'm-
We may vote the whole budget down.
That's what I'm thinking. I said, once we went to the voters, and how do you feel if we have a meeting, and it'll be this forty-five days is from Monday, this would be the earliest, they might say, yeah, this is good, but can we have it on the forty-sixth day? Because it's not a Sunday or something, I don't know.
Right.
But I wouldn't wanna warn it from Friday because that'd make it sound like we're not arrogant then, that we actually think we're gonna go and have it.
Well, we just have to find the right day.
So Saturday, the eighteenth, is still after town meeting would be the date of choice? That's a Saturday?
So I would say probably the next. Well, would we wanna have it, keep it on a Wednesday? Does the day of the week matter?
We can discuss that right there in town meeting.
Yeah.
As long as we got Larry's approval.
Right, okay.
As long as we got Larry's approval that the earliest day you can do is that day,
Yeah.
then we can go to the voters here. This is the earliest day, we think that maybe two days from that would be better. And if they all say yes, then we'll do it.
I have a question, Russ. You said, you just said that you spoke with the attorney about, about the timing of a special town meeting.
I did.
Was that relative to this problem?
Yes.
What else did he have to say?
But the only thing you talked to him about?
I told you guys, you had two options.
When did you tell them that? Was it at a meeting?
No, I polled them individually.
You didn't poll me?
You were in Puerto Rico.
I don't know, I don't know what it's, what you talked about.
You had two options, to stop construction and call it a town meeting, or to do it and take the heat for it.
That's why Sheldon offered that as an option. Because he's heard that, that you talked to the lawyer, and that was the, the-
We didn't discuss that with the board.
He just sat, oh, not as a board, but he told you each individually at some point in the last two weeks what your options are.
Yeah, we were gonna discuss that, which we did.
And as far as I'm concerned, we're already this far over the hill anyway. We might just as well take the heat for it, take the money where we always planned on taking it from anyway, and move on.
Well, I disagree with that, what you're saying.
Yes. We never planned on having a special town meeting before.
So make a motion and see if they go for that. Because you're right, you can, you can do that and take the heat for it.
That was a choice, but I-
Well, I mean, it's a choice that you've put on the table, and if you wanna vote on it, vote on it.
Well, that was, that was a choice that we put on the table.
Right, you're right.
That we all, that we all talked about as a board individually with Russell. And-
We did not vote on that.
We did not vote as a board on it.
I don't, I never even polled anybody else, I didn't even talk to anybody but Russ. Came back, but I thought we were gonna discuss it today, which we are.
So, so in my, in my naive thinking, I think we should go back to the Brennan contract that we just approved. And very specifically say, sixty-three thousand of this two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars is gonna be coming out of the capital improvement fund.
There isn't that much money left.
It's all-
It's gone.
You're already overdrawn.
We're only approving what we already did.
We're approving what we did in July. At this point, it's in there.
But you didn't spend the sixty-three thousand on that, you spent it on the Northwestminster community. Yes, you put a, didn't you say you put a, that was in the last fiscal year?
We told you last meeting, we took that out of prepare for Northwest community.
We have maintenance.
It never came out of the-
It never came out of this, we took it out of-
Capital Improvement Fund.
Okay, I'll revisit that, I'll watch the meeting, I don't remember that being said. I remember it being said that it was out of this.
The roof and the ceiling collapsed.
So I don't know that we can, I don't know that we can re-vote on this contract or not. But this is how I feel, that we should just, you know, this contract was done in whatever, July. That sixty-three thousand is coming out of the capital improvement fund for the two hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred dollars, two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Plus the IT contract.
With the balance, there's nothing about the IT contract on this contract, it's whatever. So as far as I'm concerned, the IT contract is, is somewhere else. We're not voting on that. And the balance to become, to come out of-
Do you want me to speak, please?
The surplus?
The surplus, the surplus for the fiscal year, two thousand and nineteen, which is where we talked about taking it from to begin with. That's my motion.
I keep hearing about an IT contract, how much is the IT contract for?
Approximately thirty thousand.
And we've signed that already?
Yes.
And was it voted on at a select board meeting?
That I can't tell you. I'm sure it probably was.
This is a changeover from, uh, da-da-da-da.
That's correct.
So you're making that as a motion?
Yep.
I'll second only because we got to discuss and vote it, okay?
But you gotta, you gotta stop and go back on this contract. You gotta either resend your vote on the contract, which is what I think you'd have to do, Doctor.
We're going to give you the contract, it's just a matter of revenue.
I'm not seeing a whole bunch of signatures on that contract.
But, we've already voted to approve this contract.
You did.
So, but we voted on it without approving funding, so either you're going to resend, you're going to resend what you just voted to me, and say, all right, after further discussion, we don't have it funded, so we really can't approve this contract.
I'm uncomfortable with you talking this way, but Larry, you're just going to get it. I was like, you're breathing on me, and I was like, Sheldon, I'm not picking on you, but God, I don't want to get that. I don't know why we would have to resend the contract, if we don't have the money to pay for it, the contract is going to go by, by, yeah, we, we can sign the contract, but we don't have the money. But, but, I don't, whatever way you want to do it, I'm not voting to have the select board take the money and move it. Like I said, I'll move to sixty-three, but that's it, you know?
But that's our, we don't have to move it because it's, it's gone.
Where are you guys getting sixty-three thousand dollars right now?
We aren't, it's already.
It's already done.
And it's already been spent.
Capital improved, that was capital improved.
Yeah, but it's going, it's already been paid towards the two-thirty-five.
Yeah.
It was part of this contract.
So the sixty-three that's been spent already in FY twenty has been just to pay for part of that contract.
That's correct.
Right.
And so.
So we're just saying, so far we've got sixty-three of it, but we don't have the rest, right? We got, we're one-hundred-and-ninety thousand short.
And the one-hundred-and-ninety includes this thirty thousand dollar contract for IT that we don't know whether.
No, it does not.
Yeah, it does.
Does it?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Does the one-hundred-and-ninety include the thirty for the IT contract?
Yes.
Yes, he said earlier it was.
Okay, I'm just, I just wanted.
Right, so we're.
Just trying to add the two contracts together and make sure it equals the amount that you guys are talking about.
I mean, so far we did, we didn't do anything wrong with the sixty-three, we did something seriously wrong with the one-ninety, okay? So what he's bringing up, I guess, is, as the select board, we're going to go ahead and move it, and that's what we're discussing, right? We're discussing whether.
We're going to use it.
Right.
Or we're going to use one-hundred-and-ninety thousand of it.
Right. But we need approval of the select board to do it, because only the select board can do it.
That's my motion in any way.
This motion is we just spend it without asking the, the town voters, the other option is to spend it after asking the town voters.
Since we're under the vote, we would have to defeat his motion.
Right.
As we're having this discussion, if, unless he's right, or whatever, so.
Well, I don't understand, I mean, we've had this discussion, and you're going to negate it entirely, is that what you're?
I was, we were on, I was on the pressure that we had for.
We've been, we've been talking about taking this funding for this building out of surplus for a year.
I know, but you, you know, you realize that we've been talking about, about the fact that the town people should vote about on this.
That's what we're discussing.
I mean, it, you know, there's a discussion that's been going on that has a different view of, of what we've been doing.
I think he totally understands that, but I think he's just making a motion to see if you.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to move this thing along one way or another, I don't care.
Well, let's have a vote then.
Yeah.
So do we?
I called a motion, okay?
Call motion, do we understand what the motion is?
Who seconded the motion?
Did someone second it?
I seconded for the discussion, I did.
Sheldon made the motion, Craig seconded it, and the motion, as I understand it, is that we take the money, remaining money needed for the Brennan contract out of the current surplus.
I had a quick question before we.
Yeah.
Uh, sorry to put you on there.
To finish this con, to finish.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I get it, no, no, I, I don't want to, uh, put our esteemed counsel to on the spot, but you did say we're out of the lane on a vote like that, considering, right, legally, because.
You know, I'm not the town council.
I understand, but you, but you.
Select board legal advice, I can tell you what I think, how.
I just want to make sure I was hearing you correctly, you said we would be out of the lane.
I think you're at risk.
Yeah, at risk.
I want to amend the motion.
Thank you.
I'd like to amend the motion. I would like to amend the motion to, um, to seek approval for the, the motion that was made at a special town meeting after town meeting.
Does the original motion maker have to approve the amendment?
No, he doesn't have to approve it.
All right, so we need to vote on whether we want.
I'm looking, here's what you're asking. I think really what, I almost think that we either approve the sixty-three and not the one-ninety, or we approve the whole amount. Sixty-three, we have a right as a select board to approve, right now.
Well, no, we don't have, I don't believe we have to approve it, because that's from the capital improvement fund, yeah.
It's done, and it was there, do I agree that you have the right to spend it? No, because I think there's a hundred thousand in there, you shouldn't have, but.
But it is the capital improvement.
But it's the capital improvement fund, I, I agree with that.
That's something different.
But his motion was for the whole two-thirty-five, not the one-ninety.
Right.
So I'm saying, if his motion is for two-thirty-five, amended that we, we only approve sixty-three of it, the rest of it we go to the voters.
So now you have two amendments on.
Right, we have two amendments.
Well, we didn't get a second on hers.
Right, we have not gotten a second on hers.
We didn't get a second.
I, I will.
All right, I know we're, right, so.
Um, I'll, uh.
Gotcha, rescind.
I'll second Craig's motion.
So wait, 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 wait.
Let me, let me catch up.
Toby's rescinded her amendment.
She didn't get a second either.
Yeah. Suggested.
Okay, so now, Craig, what are you doing?
I'm, I'm in the motion that we only approve the sixty-three thousand, and we go to the voters for the one-ninety.
Yeah, your, your, the auditor's report says that fund actually had sixty-seven in it.
Okay, so should he say sixty-seven, are we following the auditor's?
You know what, we ought to follow something that's in writing, I don't have the sixty-three in writing, so if the sixty-seven is written, I'll, I'll change mine to sixty-seven, okay?
Okay.
Because I don't have it in writing, so you're right.
So now we're changing it to sixty-seven, okay.
So the motion's made by Craig, Kevin seconded it.
Kevin seconded it, thank you.
Right, and the motion is to.
Amendment to the motion.
Amendment to the motion, excuse me, to approve sixty-seven thousand for the project from the capital improvement fund.
From the capital improvement, yeah.
The remainder, uh, to be approved by voters in a special town meeting, and the remainder, we should put a figure on, do we?
Uh, one more, I guess we're going to go to the vote, we're going to go, the remainder would come from, yeah, we gotta, we gotta get the remainder to the two-thirty-five, so you're right, so it would be one-ninety.
One-hundred, one-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars.
Well, actually, it would be less than that because it doesn't have the, it doesn't have the IT in there. This is just Brennan, right? Brennan, so there's thirty thousand for the IT that we haven't discussed, we're only on the discussion of the movement of the two-thirty-five for Brennan, right?
Right.
So that would be one-sixty, am I right?
Yes, is that right? So the one-ninety included the thirty for the IT?
Yeah.
Right, so.
Yeah, one-sixty and two.
But are you only doing this for this contract, or just the remainder of the project?
You gotta do it for the remainder of the project, because some of it has already been spent.
But we're not asking.
You can't just stop that.
Right.
When you're finishing the room, you have to finish the IT.
Is that what you're saying?
But we don't have the right to go get the money to pay them, and so we're having discussion of how we're paying them.
I would just do for the remainder of the project.
Project at the special town meeting.
At the special town meeting. And at that special town meeting, you'd better outline what the remainder of that project budget is.
Right.
The problem is we're.
I don't want round numbers, one-hundred-and-ninety, I want, we got this much left.
Well, because, because the project's roughly one-ninety, but Brennan's contract's two-thirty-five, and we're under the motion of the two-thirty-five, which doesn't have the IT in it, you see what I'm saying? So his move.
Well, that's, that's not what.
No.
That's not what Russell just said.
Right.
He said the two-hundred-and-thirtieth.
The two-thirty-five included the IT or not?
Two-thirty-five did not include the IT.
But then he said it did include it.
But then, no.
No.
The one-ninety did.
The one-ninety did.
Sixty-five, you take the sixty-five off, and then you have one-hundred-and-sixty.
So we're still on the original motion, which is Brennan's contract, which is two-thirty-five, we're amending it down to we're only going to pay sixty-seven thousand of it so far.
From the capital improvement fund, and ask the voters.
Towards phase three of the town hall, and I suppose make it direct.
Um, and I guess my quick question is, if we say one-hundred-and-ninety thousand in this motion, does that mean we're, we're, we have to ask for one-hundred-and-ninety thousand at the town meeting, or could we say, well, it turns out to be, it's like one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand?
Do you know what I'm saying?
Do you whenever it's warned at that point?
When we warn it.
We need to nail down.
You'll hone it down.
But not tonight?
I don't think so, just whatever is necessary.
Because when you're all done, Brennan's not getting one-hundred-and-ninety, he's getting less.
Right, and I'm just wondering, do you have to say tonight exactly what we're going to ask for at the special town meeting?
I don't think so, I think.
Right, Fletcher says no, good, okay.
I think so too, it's just the remainder of what we all.
All right. Let's, do we need to restate the amended motion, or do we all understand?
We need her to read it.
I, there's no way.
Yeah.
No possible way.
Do you want me to repeat it then?
Uh, so you're gonna approve sixty-seven thousand?
From the capital improvement fund.
From the capital improvement fund, I'm gonna draw some arrows, and the remainder of the project at a special town meeting, and it's toward the phase three project at the town hall.
Uh-huh.
That sounds good.
This is the amendment to Sheldon's original.
This is the amendment to Sheldon's.
Yep, okay.
Do you need a second on that, Russell?
Right, and have we voted on your amendment?
No, Kevin seconded it.
So now we need to vote on the amendment?
That's correct.
Okay.
On the.
Amendment to the motion.
On Craig's amendment to the motion.
Then we only do sixty-seven, we don't do the two-thirty-five.
Right, and we understand what it is? All right, all in favor of amendment to the, wait, sorry.
My original motion was to take the money from the capital improvement fund, off the two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, or two-hundred and whatever.
Two-thirty-five, yeah.
Less.
Under, under his contract.
That was my original motion, and to take, and take the balance out of surplus funding that we have from this last year's balance, that was my original motion.
Right.
All right, so your amendment to the motion is to take the sixty-seven thousand dollars, make me clarify on this, sixty-seven thousand dollars out of the capital improvement fund, which we've already done, and then you're going to.
Ask the voters.
Ask the voters at a special town meeting, or the remainder of what's needed, or the phase three out of the.
Got it. Call the question.
Capital.
Out of, not of the capital improvement, it'll be out of the surplus.
Out of the, out of the surplus.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so we're ready to vote on the amendment, yes?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor of Craig's amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, let's vote on the amended motion, right?
Uh, now we're back to the main emotion.
The main motion, which has been amended.
Which has been amended.
So, it's essentially the same as Craig's motion, and that negates Sheldon's motion.
Replaces.
So we're, replaces.
Replaces.
Replaces, so essentially we're voting on this same thing we just voted on.
Same thing, yeah.
Okay, all of us in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion passes, amended motion passes.
Good, now you've figured a way to fund it.
Okay. Anything else on that issue?
Does the contractor stop tomorrow?
We need to have a discussion with the contractor, see if he's willing to gamble and continue on, I think.
He wants to work for nothing for a while?
Can he go someplace else for a while?
No, we can.
The sixty-three thousand.
We've spent that, but there is no sixty-seven anymore.
How much money do we have in repairs?
In repairs?
In our repair maintenance, would you?
Not off the top of my head, but I'm sure we have some.
We can offer the balance of what we have up for that, to finish, you know, to pay him off or where he is now.
We might have some in there, we, well, we got twenty thousand in the budget, I assume from the year before, for the, I don't have last year's, the trouble is, we're looking at next year, I don't have last year's.
I, I think you'd have to talk to the lawyer about the, the contract, you know, there's something to do about contracts.
I assume you're, you're calling Larry on this one.
Yeah.
So are we on the height of the year, or what are we doing now?
Um, well, we're still on final budget discussion, is there anything else we want to discuss?
Just back up a little bit, Russ just asked you about the contractor, I don't know what you came up with, and I don't believe it's on the recorder, what did you just come up with, does the contractor stop or not?
We suggest he call the attorney and find out what our legal choices are. But also, I think he has to have that discussion with, with Brennan to tell him where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Just has to be clear. Can, can I, I have one more question. In the discussion with Larry, can you guys please get clarification on the fund balance policy, and what your obligation is as to when you should set aside money per that policy? I would like clarification on that, because I don't agree with what your interpretation is, but that doesn't mean I'm right.
Right.
It just means we need to clarify that.
Okay, no, that would be fine, I would like that to be clear.
Would you have time to have us have written the answer before town meeting?
That we should be able to talk.
I think we needed it, right?
Yeah, that's fine. The policy, you mean?
The answer to her question.
Yeah, like when, I mean, I don't, I don't understand how you decide at what timeframe you fund that.
It's a good question, and I think if we, we get his legal ruling, then that's the guideline of what we're going to follow or not follow.
Yep. I mean, what I would like to see is actually a schedule through the year, as I said, again, this is when we know what the surplus is, this is when we decide what to do about it, instead of.
I would put it on your calendar for budget discussion.
Mm-hmm.
That's your, that's your.
And make a decision, yeah. And, yeah, and not put off making a decision about.
No, I mean, I was at the town meeting last night, and I thought that the word emergency was taken out, but I was proved wrong.
Yeah, that's.
Because I thought that's what we decided, was emergency was only for emergency, and we've.
Yeah, but that's a sort of a different discussion, so, yeah, we're off that discussion. Right, any other questions? Or, sorry, Craig, sorry.
No, I was just saying, so going back, if we could get Larry to clarify...
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah, we're all reading the same rules and regulations, but his interpretation...
Okay. Yes, thank you, Russ.
I can do that?
Yep. Anything else on the final budget discussion? Okay, on to the final...
Are you going to lower your budget this year? Are you gonna give the taxpayers back money this year?
That would be fine with me.
I'm asking, I'm not telling. This was a question that she brought up last meeting.
So...
That $50,000 would level fund us this year. Right now, we're looking at a 2.5% increase. $50,000 would level fund us.
When you say that...
Would stabilize the tax rate a little bit more.
Let me ask you though, does that count the, that's all the articles that pass? So if one article that had $50,000 doesn't pass, we would be, is this before or after the articles?
This is when you amend your budget, that bottom line, that you've already gotta amend it by the capital, sorry, the equipment fund and the bridge fund. When you state that number, when Kevin does his article, at that point, you would declare what number you're carrying, and then...
And that's before the articles?
And that could be that $50,000 surplus added to the, removed from the budget to level fund us.
That's at the point at which we do that.
That's, I'm, that's when I would...
I think more, 550, we have $550,000 surplus, $50,000 is...
I, the only thing I have to say about that, and I'm glad that you brought it up, is that I don't, I don't know that you guys know what you're doing with surplus yet. And I do, I mean, you do have a number, and we do have 550, so yes, you probably could figure out how much we have left to give back, but this, this whole surplus is such a moving target right now. I mean, we could do that from the floor, Paul and I did that last...
You have to think we've been doing it all year, well, what are we, you know, well, we'll see what this gets them.
But you're gonna, for us to do that before the articles have passed?
No. You amend the article, number one, to include, I don't know, how do we do it most time, to just, we...
We're gonna have to amend it anyway to pull those special articles out, so that it's a clean number that's just your base funding for running the town. And then, you know, as Russ says, the equipment fund, the bridge fund, we add those back in. But if you've got a clean number that includes offsetting some of the budget with your current operating surplus...
You could do that.
You could do that, you could do that at the same time.
I'd recommend that.
Question, do you, all the special articles, Westminster Cares and Crisis Center, is it all listed in here in the budget? Are those all ones that have already been approved, or are those part of...
Only the ones that have been approved.
So we have more than we're gonna vote on?
Absolutely.
So that, so that two, two thirds of it's gonna go up even more?
Absolutely.
Right.
Yes.
So it's gonna be more than $50,000 at this point?
No, it's not. The 35,000 right now, 21,000 of allocations, plus sevens, if they get paid there, 95, 34, is 56, 335. Butterfield Libraries increase of 19, 20 makes it a total of 54, 415.
So if all the articles get approved?
Exactly, we're adding $54,415 to the, to the budget. $50,000 just about level funds us, if we take...
A good feeling, a good feel thing for the populace, if you gave them back $100,000.
I totally agree.
Another $190,000 in April, just a thought.
I think, yeah, more than $50,000.
You have $550,000 there, boy, I don't think you're gonna wanna see sitting around.
I totally agree with that.
What's that gonna amount to? What do you give it back? What am I gonna see?
Deuces taxes. Deuces your taxes.
Yeah, by what, ten times?
I don't know, somebody has a calculator.
It's about four cents on your taxes.
I'd rather see you pay it another mile of road.
You can bring that up.
So...
We had a call...
Yeah, Proctor, did you say that's under Article 7, when we amend the budget, so as well? That's where we give the money back, or however you say it.
Do we still take the amount to be raised by taxation at the end of it, or do we just look?
No, no, we've stopped separating that out, 'cause you'd never know between grants and tax where the final line's gonna be. So we let that through.
So you're just, we're just making a motion to pay in debts, really?
With $100,000 of it to be funded through surplus, is that how you would say it?
Says general expenses.
$100,000 offset taxes?
Yeah.
$50,000.
Well, they're saying, he's dusting $100,000.
I like the $100,000 back.
Yeah, me too.
Sorry, Russ.
I do.
What is your reason for not wanting, like, do you have a legitimate reason that it bothers you that the taxpayers want that money back, or...
Not a bit, that's why I brought it up.
Well, I know, but when we just said $100, you just gave a look like...
He likes to be safe, he's like a cautious kind of guy.
I thought even, you, you had mentioned $50 last time.
Well, because you don't wanna drop your tax rate and raise it.
And so $50 made sense to me, doing the numbers, that it would break us even. It also gives us the ability to do it next year, not give it all at one file swoop. We do need to fund the new fund reserve policy that we did.
Don't have to, I've been told we don't have to.
Not twits fullest, but we should start, we have it, we should start something. We need to keep the 5% in the capital reserve, so if you start doing the math, you have about $100, $150,000 that is in that unclaimed area.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's just an opinion thing.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, some people are like, yeah, we need to sit on a lot of money and...
We have a $309,000 obligated contracts that are coming up before July 1st. That's something that, that is concerning.
For what, what do you mean?
Pavement, forest road, we have grants to match, but we have, we have need also, and if we run into something, that's on us. So you kind of need a little bit, not a lot, just a little, but we have $309,000 worth of contracts coming up before July 1st.
Which should be budgeted, right, it's budgeted.
It is budgeted, it is budgeted, no question.
I know, I make you nervous, not have some extra money, I know, Russ.
Just, it is what it is.
We don't want you to be nervous about that, but I would like to see $100,000 given back to the taxpayers, that's my opinion, so...
I know, I think I'm probably with you, because even, some of these things, we do have a choice. I mean, when we come to July, we look at Forest Road, and if we all of a sudden are shit, we don't have to spend it to fix the road. It's a great idea, we should, but... But you're saying that $100,000 would actually lower taxes compared to this year?
Would lower the amount needed.
But then people are paying school taxes too, and so those go up, so, I don't know, do we need...
Well, I don't know, when you say that, $50 to me per payment, I mean, I'm not poor, but when you say they're never gonna see that, that's a blanket statement you shouldn't say.
I said, they're, they're never gonna see a decrease in the total budget and total taxes from the town of Westminster. The school just went up substantially.
Right, but if we can offset that a little bit...
With ours, absolutely.
It, it still goes back to, if $550 looks like a lot.
Looks like a lot?
It does.
It is a lot, when you guys grilled this poor girl from Greater Falls Connection about what do you guys do with your surplus at the end of the year, and should we give you $2,500? She had a $6,000 surplus, and she was grilled about it. I'm like...
So here's the question, yeah.
I, it's just, do we need, do we need to vote on how much, do we need to vote on how much we wanna give back to the taxpayers?
We're gonna go to the town meeting, it's like what we always do. It's just like what we always do.
I'll make a motion that we give $100,000.
You second?
You're the chair, I'll second it, so you don't look like you voted for it, okay?
Is there more discussion on that?
It leaves you how much surplus?
$450,000.
Minus $190, if it passes.
So that would be $250,000, $260,000. And if we, after that, wanna put $50,000 into the emergency fund?
Call the question.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you have to ask the voters to put money into the reserve fund, or can it's like, we just do it? Do you know the answer to that? Into that reserve fund?
The emergency one?
The emergency.
I would say that the policy allows them to do it.
They gotta tell us, so it's...
Any other...
But it has to be done, in specifically, you can't just say, oh, we have money in there, we have to say, we wanna put $2 into the reserve fund.
It's your budget. Here's the fact that you would, so you can even just wait till next year to do it, keep $260 in your...
Because it would be the same thing, essentially. Yes, okay. Everybody understand the motion? Okay, all in favor of returning $100,000 to the taxpayers?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Passes, oh, I said aye also.
What constitutes an emergency?
Don't go down that road.
Yeah, don't go down that road, yeah.
Well, I didn't know it was a natural disaster, or...
Oh, we did, that's why I thought we took that word emergency out, but...
It's in there a lot.
Was it town hall?
I thought, I thought that got defeated because of emergency, really, that's what we... Flex keeps looking at me, agree with me too, 'cause I was like...
We didn't think, it had to be a fund that just sat there, and we needed some money, we could take it up, take it out.
Right, 'cause I kept saying, we don't wanna put in emergency, 'cause we can't agree on what emergency is, you know? So I thought at that meeting, 'cause I remember leaving town meeting, oh, thank God, you know, that was a dumb idea to have emergency, because what are we gonna do with it?
Craig, you approved the policy.
I don't think I did, that's what I...
You signed it, it's, it's on the boards, it's...
I thought we took the word emergency out, I thought we did.
This is probably a discussion for another time, and Larry is gonna weigh in on it, so I think move along to something else.
I don't know, I don't think I voted for it, but I didn't...
I'm not sure.
In the other hand, we don't have anything in it, so...
Right. Okay, town meeting, final discussion, information changes needed for articles.
What is that? It's, it's your information?
Oh, I see.
That you are all supposed to look at?
Is that what you mean, yeah. It is the thing right here.
You have your pie charts. You have to decide whether you're going to print hundreds of them and put them out?
Boy, jeez, I see Sheldon's name a lot of places.
Maybe I'll just ask this, knowing this is not the general public, are these useful to anyone at town meeting?
I'm sure some people, I know.
I don't think we need to buy, you know...
We got back almost as many as we printed last year.
Stop and think of what your total turnout was at town hall or at town meeting. I don't think there's any reason to really print more than 100 of them.
Well, we could, yeah, maybe print limited amounts, since we don't get a volume discount in printing anyway, we print our own, so...
You just touch color, it's...
Yeah, okay, so maybe limited amount.
I don't think you want to be 100, really.
I mean, in my opinion, the more information you have for people, the better. If they don't want the information, then, that's what I say. And is this where we're, are we gonna talk about the PowerPoints too, or those are next? So do we have any questions about our information?
I don't.
Will your laryngitis be better by the side? Okay, good.
So have you guys settled on who's making all the motions?
Yeah, we have the information that's needed.
Or email it, email?
I guess my only question about mine is, I'm gonna be talking about the 121 Bridge. And we have that report at the town hall, people won't see it, right?
That's correct.
It's the state report on the, the bridge. Anything else on that? PowerPoint, four topics, question mark, final adjustments. So, we have Sand and Gravel, if possible, feasibility study, we have, and Craig is going to, are you gonna give that?
Yeah.
Presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any questions about that?
No, I'm gonna be giving it to Russ, I meant, I thought I was...
Yeah, refining the numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Is that something that's gonna be available for us at the county?
This will be a PowerPoint.
Yes.
So you'll be able to see it, yeah.
And it will be on the...
Okay. Yeah. Henwood Hill Project, are you gonna, no, you're not. This is mostly photographs of the Henwood Hill article. And who's going to talk about that?
Craig is.
Craig.
I am? Who, what?
I believe you, it was your baby.
You're being, you're being wise, huh? I'm the one who voted against it, why would I be trying to say?
It was in the minutes, I think, last...
You have to do it here, you have to do, yeah, yeah.
Just someone has to talk about it.
It is, it's right there. It's the last page of your information sheet. You took the... No, I'm sorry.
I don't think so, because he wasn't in favor of it, not.
I'm telling you what, I sat there, and I ain't doing that, 'cause I'm against it, so why would I do it? But maybe I should be the one.
Yeah, that's probably here, Sheldon. Sheldon, your name.
I'm doing anything else in the gravel, but I know that.
Yeah, okay, so there's three, and then Community House, we have it PowerPoint also.
That was Craig.
That's Craig, Northwest Community House, we have that. Good? Any questions about your presentation?
And the budget? You just put it up there.
Oh, and the budget, yeah, yeah.
That's Kevin's.
Yeah, so, are you good with that, Kevin? Or here he is.
I'm the guy.
You're the guy, right.
Lucky me this year.
Yeah, so anyway, presumably, just the idea is that people, as we talk about it, will be able to see what we're talking about, and we don't have to, it's like, go through all the county courts.
People like looking at pictures.
Yeah, I mean...
There's gonna be three surveys on the back rail also. Two of them are on the chairs, if you're interested in grabbing them. The first one's on the assisted living, senior housing, what you'd like to see in the town of Westminster, or nothing. The other one is on broadband. Everyone is requested to fill out the broadband, even if you have service and you like your service. Just answer the questions accordingly. If we don't, we need 30% of our registered voters to respond, so, residents, I should say. And so that they can take it and put it into a large Wyndham County feasibility study. So, if you're interested, please grab one, they're on that bench right behind...
Is somebody sort of talk about that at town meeting?
Yes, I...
And then we have a senior housing survey.
Survey, that's what I just said.
Yeah, but I mean, at town meetings, that's what I'm saying, so if I give a little report, I'll be happy to ask people to fill that out.
That's ours, right?
So you said three surveys, assisted living, senior housing, are they two separate? And broadband, you said three surveys?
The third survey is...
So this is one, assisted living, senior housing, yeah, okay.
The row will call.
Okay. Oh, you have a survey for that?
Well, just a yes or no type thing, are you interested? I've been putting it in the Gazette, gotten only a half dozen, and if that's it, then we won't do it. If the people are really interested, then we should try to get as many people to respond as we can.
And this is what you mean by other proper businesses, that's who, you mean, this is town meeting?
This is under other proper business, yes. Because we don't have...
At town meeting, not tonight?
At town meeting.
Yeah, thank you. All right, anything, any other unfinished business? New business, Conservation Commission payment request.
Typically, I just do these, we got paid last year for the Conservation Commission's grant, and they did not use it all. But again, it, the $3,500 was, again, carried, not carried over, so they're now requesting the remainder, which they, they had kind of forgotten about. And it is $146.12. I just wanted confirmation that you're okay with that, before I put it in front of you for a warrant.
No, I think they do a great job.
I need a motion, please.
So move.
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded that the town pay the Conservation Commission's invoice of $146.51. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Oh, hi, sorry. I wasn't...
Yeah. Management's report.
Just a couple quick things, town hall, we've touched base on, did you wanna give them an update on the assisted living, senior housing?
Um, I wasn't there for the full last meeting, but we developed a survey, Kevin, you were there?
Yeah, we, we can, we took your survey, we also took the AARP survey for the, which has a very extensive request for housing, and was, we've narrowed it down, I think, pretty well. To be delivered to the town, and the various mechanisms for doing that, for the council we have formed to plot solutions for senior living for the town of Westminster, and other solutions for senior living, that run the full gamut, the full spectrum. And you get, so we came up with, I don't think it's concluded yet, if we have a...
Yes, it is.
It is, it is for me, so...
It is concluded, and it's available.
Okay, and so that's gonna be distributed by the board members, and hopefully we get, I believe, we want it better than 20% participation to get a good sleeve of selections for some accuracy as to what everyone is thinking, you know, what everyone, 'cause everyone has a different viewpoint of how extensive it should be, how much of that should be sought out from grants or state, and write down to just fully private. So we're gonna distribute that, and then find out what, what the town's thinking, and then go to the next step.
Did you call up with a mission statement for the committee?
No.
No, okay.
We, we did not call up with a mission statement, because we wanted to get the survey done, to make sure that, you know, the mission statement certainly reflects the spectrum of wants and needs that the community is expressing.
Thank you.
And then the last one was the broadband project, which I just mentioned, so...
Okay.
Boards' information?
Boards' information, boards' information.
In your packet, you have a request for a new Conservation Commission member?
Do you need a motion?
Yes, we do.
I move that we accept Naomi Craig's petition to be on the Westminster Conservation Commission.
I'll second.
The movement seconded that we appoint Naomi Craig to the Conservation Commission? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, and he is appointed. Other business?
Yeah. On the paperwork that I got from Russell for, on animal control, Russell says that you're an animal control officer, is that true?
I help out because we have had such a lack of complete service, but yes.
Wait, would you come and track those cats that are at my house?
We've had this person come up, and they're chipped, we've had this conversation, Rita, we can't...
What are you talking about?
The cats that you brought to the Wyndham Humane Society were chipped.
One.
So they told you to bring them back home and let them loose.
That is not true.
So you left the cat there, and they did that?
Yes.
Okay, so the cats are chipped, and...
No, no, no. How do you know that the other ones that are there are chipped?
I don't, I've never been there.
And neither do I. Which would be an animal control officer's job to track them and take them to see if they are.
I will get to...